Good evening. My name is David Winchell. I'm a Public Participation Specialist with the Department of Environmental Conservation, D E C, Region Five, next region over. First of all, before we get started, I really want to thank the View for hosting us here. This is a great facility to have this type of meeting, so we're really appreciative of that. Welcome to the third of four public meetings on the New York State Department of Transportation's and Environmental Conservation's draft amendment for the 1996 Remsen Lake Classic Travel Corridor. The draft U M P amendment is also a draft supplemental environmental impact statement in a draft river areas plans for the main branch of the Serenack River, the main branch of the Racket River, middle branch of the Moose River, and the north branch of the Moose River. As such, the meetings are also considered public hearings pursuant to and in compliance with the state environmental quality review and Wild and Scenic recreational river regulations. The final scope for this project was released on October 22nd, 2019. As you may have already heard, we originally scheduled three public meetings. We've scheduled a fourth public meeting in Utica. That'll be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Thursday, December 19th at the State Office Building at 207 Genesee Street in Utica. This was posted in yesterday's environmental notice bulletin. So before we get started, one of the things I want to point out is that a lot of people have been calling this what we're proposing to do here with rail and trail de-compromise. We don't look at it that way. We at the D E C, D O T, and New York State consider this the best and most effective and economically beneficial use of the corridor. An 85-mile scenic railroad south of Tupper Lake, passing through some of the most remote, pristine, and picturesque parts of the Adirondacks, providing one of the warmest and best-seen train experiences in the country. And an all-season, multi-use recreational trail north of Tupper Lake, connecting the Tri-Lakes communities and providing a variety of recreational opportunities for visitors and residents of all abilities. We think this was the most efficient use of, the best use of this corridor. Clearly, many of the municipalities along the corridor agree as they have passed resolutions in support of this. Some things have happened since the last go-around with this. The Adirondack Park Agency has amended the travel corridor definition in the State Land Master Plan. New York has purchased the parcels in the corridor near the north community college. We have an access agreement with the Lake Classic North Elway Historical Society, allowing the public to access their parcel at the end of the northern terms of the corridor. A draft historic plan has been developed, as have a logo and a branding statement. The latter are in the appendices of the draft U M P, and we ask that not only do you look at the U M P, but look at those appendices as well and why comment on that. We have a simple agenda tonight. We're going to give a presentation with an overview of the proposal, and that will be followed by a public comment period. Public comments will be limited to three minutes each to ensure everyone who wants to comment has the opportunity. You need to have put your name on a comment card, just one of the cards that we have out at the signing desk. If you haven't, you still have an opportunity to do that. They are, excuse me, if you cannot fit your comments into three minutes, there's other opportunities. You can submit them in writing via mail or email. Deadlines for comments, it's close of business Wednesday, January 8th. Contact information, including where to view and download the draft U M P and appendices, are on the signing table as well. One thing to be aware of, comments, whether we receive them at a public meeting or we receive them through letters, or we receive them through email, they all get equal consideration. So it doesn't matter how we receive them, they will be viewed equally. Before we get started, I wanted to introduce some of the D O T and D E C people that are here. From D O T, we have Ray Kessinger. And Jim McLaughlin. From D E C, we have Andrea Peter, who's out at the... Yes. Oh, there's... Sharon, she's still out here, sorry, that's from D O T. John Schmidt is here, Randy Young. And this guy, Keith Rivers. Next, I'd like, finally, I want to introduce Linda Luby, she's the Regional Director of D O T, and she's going to start the presentation.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Linda Luby. I'm the Regional Director for the New York State Department of Transportation, Region Two, which is the Mohawk Valley region. Basically because we expand the Mohawk, we, we're adjacent to the Mohawk Valley, the Mohawk River Valley between Schenectady and Syracuse. For the Adirondack Park, we cover the portions from, which include Fulton County, Hamilton County, Hurkimer County, and Anida County. As an agency, the Department of Transportation will be responsible for oversight of the rail portion of the Remsen Lake Classic Corridor, specifically as proposed from Remsen to Tupper Lake. As an overview, the Remsen Lake Classic Travel Corridor is 119 miles long, beginning in Remsen, Anida County, and passing through Hurkimer, St. Lawrence, Franklin Counties, and terminating in Lake Placid, Lake Placid Essex County. Use of the travel corridor is governed by a unit management plan, U M P. U M P identifies opportunities for public use consistent with the classification of protected lands. U M P considers the ability of the resources and ecosystems to accommodate such use. Currently, the 119-mile corridor is designated Railroad Right Way. Constructed in 1892, the line was operated continuously until 1972. In 1974, the corridor is purchased by New York State. The state authorizes use of the corridor through two revocable use and occupancy permits. One permit is for the Adirondack Railway Preservation Society, which is in effect between May 1st through November 30th, and the New York State Snowmobile Association, which is effective from December 1st to April 30th. The scope of work as proposed in the amended U M P is as follows. From Big Moose to Tupper Lake, rehabilitate 45 miles of track from Big Moose to Tupper Lake. Rehabilitate and construct sightings with accessible platforms at Sabattas and Beaver River. From Tupper Lake to Lake Placid, construct a new 34-mile trail from Tupper Lake to Lake Placid. Construct shared parking facilities at Tupper Lake and connect to existing Tupper Lake Track. Construct new emergency access for the town of Tupper Lake. Rail service and rail-trail junction in Tupper Lake will reimagine Tupper Lake to serve as the terminus for rail and a gateway for the new multi-use trail. This will include constructing a platform with canopy for rail service, reconfigure rail to minimize footprint and provide separation for trail construction, install small train maintenance facility and storage track, and connect rail service and rail-trail to the depot. For the Tupper Lake South segment, the following are proposed. Track structure rehabilitated for rail operations. From Big Moose South, tie ballast replacement is necessary. From Big Moose North, rehabilitation of tracks to Tupper Lake. No physical alterations of passenger stations, bridges, visalator structures, which preserves the listed features, feeling, and character of the corridor. Railcar improvements, independent of the U M P, include railcar rehabilitation and the acquisition of historic dome car. The dome car, as depicted in this slide, was built in 1955 as Union Pacific Number 9001. Has been acquired by the Adirondack Scenic Railroad and is being refurbished with delivery expected by the end of 2019. With respect to the improvements in Tupper Lake, I'll briefly discuss these improvements before moving to the graphic depicting these improvements, and they're also on the board, first board under the lap there. Rail service improvements, 550-foot raised passenger platform, passing track additions and alignment improvements, reconfigured reduced radii, wide section of the track, storage building, maintenance yard, buffer with vegetation fencing needed. Rail-trail improvements, trail proposed to run south of Railback to join with the town village trails, new parking potential, including capacity for snowmobile trailers. General community improvements, access to Tupper Lake Depot, and emergency route detour from Washington Street to MacArthur Street. I'm going to try to point these out on the next slide. Hopefully you can hear me, because I'm a step away from the microphone. So the new switch, it's in this, and then a new switch, and so we can add the rest of the grid. Okay, it's got me, oh, I have one wrong here. That makes it easier. Okay, extend existing siding and add third track. New platform with canopy between existing siding and new third track. Realign the Y tracks. New maintenance building and storage yard with vegetative buffer. Remove existing Y track and extension, convert Railback to Trail. Connect new trail to existing trail. That's the new end of track, which basically lines up at this end of the grinds. It's extended there. Construct trail, construct trail on Railback from here, here north. Bottom leg, this way north, through the trail. New emergency access, MacArthur Street to Washington Avenue. And the proposed parking areas. Lastly, the improvements at Sabattas and Beaver River will include new 300-foot split-level platforms at both locations, creation of double-ended siding at Sabattas. This is where I'm going to turn the presentation over to D E C, Regional Director, Randy Young.
Good evening. So from Tupper Lake north to Lake Placid, the plan is all rails and ties and railroad equipment will be removed between Tupper Lake and Lake Placid, except rails and ties associated with tracks at the depots will be retained for historical interpretive purposes. All historical railroad equipment and signs will be stored and used in future historical interpretive purposes. The proposed 34-mile, multi-use, year-round recreational trail will connect communities of Tupper Lake, Serenack Lake, and Lake Placid. The trail will be constructed 10-foot wide, compact stone dust, the full length, with two-and-a-half-foot wide shoulders. And the diagram depicts a cross-section of the trail. The full length of the trail will meet ADA standards. Five major access points will be constructed to be ADA accessible. And wherever practical, other access points will be designed to meet ADA accessibility requirements. The Tri-Lakes communities see the plans we have described as providing significant benefits both in attracting visitors and improving the quality of life for the residents. This slide shows some examples of the benefits these villages in the north will see. Tupper Lake, which will benefit from both the train and the trail, is very excited about the potential of increased visitation, particularly in the junction part of town where the train and the trail will meet. Serenack Lake also sees the trail and the train depot as an important component of development of the depot street area. Both Serenack Lake and Lake Placid see the trail as being a central component of the current and future trail networks. The photos in this slide depict the current and possible future features of the corridor at one location, the causeway across Lake Goldbeak. These next slides depict the central relationship between the corridor and the trail networks and the Tri-Lakes areas. This fits right in to the recent legislation signed by Governor Cuomo to develop a comprehensive plan for a statewide system of non-motorized, multi-use trails consisting of a network of non-motorized primary corridors linked and enhanced by regional and local non-motorized multi-use corridors. The draft U M P amendment also includes a draft historic preservation plan. This draft plan includes discussion of the historic significance, activities, and remaining infrastructure within the corridor, description of the adverse impacts of the proposed action, and preliminary mitigation efforts to address the impact. We're seeking input on a preservation plan during this public comment period. We also are planning stakeholder meetings with local and regional historic preservation organizations for finalizing the preservation plan and the U M P amendment. The corridor intersects four rivers sections classified as scenic under the Wild and Scenic recreational rivers regulations. As such, the draft U M P S C I S amendment is also a draft amendment to the river area management plan for the main branch of the Serenack River, the main branch of the Racket River, the middle branch of the Moose River, and the north branch of the Moose River. Here's the anticipated schedule moving forward. Finalization of the U M P will occur in spring 2020. Rail removal and rehabilitation will be completed in the fall, sorry, of 2020. Trail construction will begin in the spring of 2021 after the rails have been removed. Trail construction will be done in phases with completion of the full length of the trail in 2023. The phases of the trail construction have not yet been determined at this time. Here's the schedule for public comment. Due to the public request and additional to the three public meetings scheduled this week, as Dave said, we'll be holding a fourth meeting in Utica on December 19th. We have also extended the deadline for public comment to Wednesday, January 8th. The next steps for the unit management plan process are stakeholder engagement on the historic preservation plan, review of public comments, finalizing the historic preservation plan, a letter of resolution regarding impacts to historic features, finalizing U M P amendment with response to public comments, presentation to the Adirondack Park Agency for review and approval regarding the State Land Master Plan compliance, and final U M P amendment signature by D E C and D O T's commissioners. Lastly, we have contact information for submitting comments. Remember the deadline for comments is January 8th. And we'll now turn the meeting back over to Dave Winchell. Thank you.
It's going to take a little bit to get set up here, my note takers could come up. I'm going to move the notes up there, and I'm going to move this out a little further. So, as I mentioned earlier, persons wishing to make comments must have filled out a comment card. All we need is your name on it. They're right out on the front desk there. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Additional comments may be provided in writing. We have a timekeeper, Keith Rivers, whose name I perhaps? And Keith will hold up signs and let you know when there's one minute left, 30 seconds left, and when we need you to wrap up. Here you go, Keith. Public comment section is a process for you to provide specific suggestions or identify concerns through the proposals. Therefore, we ask that you direct your comments, direct your comments to D E C and D O T, not the audience and other groups. We are the decision makers. We're going to decide how the outcome of this. This is not a debate or time to ask questions. We ask that the audience respect speakers, even if their opinions differ from their own. If you like what you're here to say, you're welcome to applaud afterwards. If you don't like what you're here to say, we ask that you just sit quietly. It's helpful if speakers are clear to state their specific concerns with the plan and what they'd like to be seen done differently. And I will point out that while the amount of support or opposition to a proposed action or is a factor in our decision-making, this is not a referendum. It's not a look at the numbers and that's what the decision is based on. Again, if you cannot fit your comments into the three minutes provided, you can submit them in writing. Find out the contact information is on the cards out on the signing table, and as I pointed out earlier, all comments are given equal consideration no matter how we receive them. We'll keep repeating that the deadline for comments is close of business Wednesday, January 8th. With that, our first speaker is Jim Jost, and he'll be followed by Dave Core.
Try to move yourself so you don't have to lie in the corner. Well, try to make this as simple as I can. I don't have any desire to ride a train. I don't have any desire to ride a snowmobile. I don't get up in the morning until at 9:30, nine o'clock, okay? Eat something for breakfast. By the time I get done reading, eating my breakfast, I go read my Bible. By then, I, what do you call it, use the little boy room, and then I, by then the news is coming on. But that, by that time, I'm ready for my dad, okay? So, I'm not partial to either side. What I do for years is this way, okay? I worry about what's best for the people at work, whether it be in Tupper Lake or here at Old Forge, okay? About jobs for them, okay? I worry about taxes, okay, for people that can't afford to pay their taxes, okay? I'm lucky, God bless me, I can afford to pay my taxes twice over, okay? But for people that can't, okay? There's what, eight cents on a dollar or nine cents on a dollar? They go for taxes, okay? The more money that comes in from snowmobiling or from the train, okay, the better, okay? So, but that's the thing of it. I wish there was some way we could get information, like from the train, okay, or from the Adirondack Railroad, or from the people that run business here in the village, to see which, which one they feel is getting more money into the village here, okay? So that they would call it, so they could decide. They could decide, they're the ones that, you know, it's going to matter to. I know when I went to Tupper Lake last year, the people pretty much said that they would call it. They had enough, they were getting enough money in during the summertime, but it was in the wintertime, they didn't have any jobs, so they'd go out and for snowmobiling, okay? So, that's basically all I got to share with you, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Dave Core, and he'll be followed by Mark Meyer.
Thank you. My name's Dave Core. Region Six Conservation Fund, National Forest Board, Rep. Involved with a lot of sporting organizations around the state, and do a lot of different issues, particularly this one. I'm glad to see that you guys did extend another hearing down in Utica, because I think that's important. Anyways, according to the Adirondack Railroad, they were, they mentioned that they were seriously misled in recent negotiations at the railroad, won the recent lawsuit. So, in the, in the recent letter that I sent to the D E C Commissioner back in August, I want to reiterate a number of things. The state needs to honor the commitments that were made in the past from the 80s and 90s, which I did not believe were done. Over the years, a lot of different things have happened to the railroad, but without the support of the state and the promised monies that they had before, and now we're getting more promises. I hope you hold up with the promises, but maybe I'm cynical, but in the past we had, there's a lot of hurdles you have to go. The corridor narrows down to a minimum of a few places, down to 60 feet, but mostly it's 100 feet wide, and 200 feet wide in a lot of other areas. When you think of 200 feet or 100 feet, that's wider than around 28. Why can't we have a trail and, and a train? Okay? The millions of dollars will have to be spent to reimburse the federal government for past failures if the tracks are torn up, not to mention the direct cost involved tearing them up. And by the way, where's the money coming from, from all, for all of this? I don't know, we're talking a few years out. There's some 800 miles of snowmobile trails in the Adirondacks now. The railroad, railroad can still be used as a snowmobile trail without this plan, as it has been. You won't maybe be able to go through it 70 miles an hour, but, you know, we don't need, you can still use it, and that's what they've been using, okay? Once D O T gives up control of the land of D E C, it'll be subject to APA rules, and I know that there'll be some changes to that. But does any person seriously think that a motorized train, snowmobile, or anything else will be able to traverse one of the many wilderness areas, scenic rivers in the future? I'm not so sure. I'm pretty confident that sooner or later, that these sections that are put into the forest preserved now, under a corridor or in the future, eventually will not allow any motorized use. Maintenance for bridges, trestles, and other non-conforming structures under the APA Master Plan will not be allowed along with other types of maintenance. It'll only take one lawsuit to put the cave-ash to all of this. I appeal to the sporting community and the snowmobilers to see through some of this and to support the continuation of the railroad all the way to Lake Placid. For the sake of our seniors, disabled, and future generations, let's protect this heritage that we have in this great railroad. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Meyer, excuse me, and he'll be followed by Clay Lewis.
Good evening. My name is Mark Meyer. I'm a resident of Big Moose, father of four, business owner. I'm a snowmobiler, now bike ski instructor. I'm not wearing those hats. I run a snowmobile donations page on social media with over 17,500 members. Prior to this meeting, I asked members of the group to respond to an online poll regarding their opinion of rehabbing the rails or pulling them up from Big Moose north to Tupper Lake. With 1,858 respondents, 1,817 were in favor of removing the rails, 29 against, and 12 had no opinion. That's a 99.97% in favor of removing rail from Big Moose. With all the studies that were commissioned to support this plan, I don't see a comprehensive economic impact study included. If you're confronted with $34 million to rehab the trails from, the rails from Big Moose Station north to Tupper Lake, where's the return on the investment? Take into consideration this. The railroad from Tandera to Big Moose Station ran 10 runs this season. It costs almost $2.4 million to rehab the rails from Carter Station to Big Moose Station. If you brought in 10,000 passengers per season at the current ticket rate of $36.50 per adult, it would take over six and a half years to pay back that money. The numbers don't add up. According to Railway's own website, the duration for that trip is 2.66 hours. How long would that railway ride run up to Tupper Lake when you add another 45 miles one way? Snowmobility's changed over the past decade, and where Big Moose, where I live, where it used to be a day's excursion by sled, are long gone. Your riders today want to travel farther and longer between stops. The idea that possibly this area was separated not only because the sledders would leave here and not spend money, I think is false and flawed. It would open the corridor from the north for sledders who weren't, who haven't been able to get here because of the conditions on the rails without adequate snow cover. These sledders have used this area as their base of operations for years. They ventured out of here, they've always come back. They come back because they enjoy the area, the amenities that this community has to offer. Again, I see a better, a larger impact, positive impact for the communities. Again, I see a better, a larger impact, positive impact for the communities all along the corridor, especially in the winter months, because if you take the rails up and make that a trail that can be passable by snowmobilers safely and reliably, it could extend the season by weeks for those riders to get down here and spend their money in these communities. Remove the rails from Big Moose Station north, the draw of a rail trail has a far wider reach than a train ride through the woods. Thank you for your time. Do the math. Is it really worth stepping over dollars to pick up things?
Thank you, Mark. Clay Lewis, and he'll be followed by Andy Trump.
I guess the way to start this is to introduce myself. I was born when Dustin Hoffman was born, okay? Okay, which was like eighty-two years ago. And basically, my claim to fame is I'm still vertical, I exercise, I do things outside. I physically go out and enjoy things. And one of the enjoyments that I have is getting on one of our local company's bicycles and going out and having one heck of a good time, enjoyable time. But what I find is what I have to go to is the Toby Trail. And I compare the Toby Trail to the Thousand Island Bike Trail, to the Baltimore Trails, to the Erie Canal Trails, and I find out that it is not a bike trail. It's basically like a mountain trail. So what I have to do is I have to spend vacations going to different parts of the country, going to Jekyll Island where I can get on a bike, do sixteen miles, get my heart rate up three times, two and a half to three times what my resting heart rate is, endorphins coming out of the top of my head. I'm really, really happy, okay? So now, what happens is we now have an opportunity to give me a local three percent grade coming out of town where I can actually go through the woods. I can bike ten miles, fifteen miles in one direction, come back in the other direction, see deer, see animals, really enjoy myself, okay? But what I am positioned instead is a mechanical three hundred and fifty-pound four-seater bicycle for seventy-five dollars a pop to go a short distance, the bike, another seventy-five dollars or whatever to come back again. I can't even take anybody else unless I can actually afford to get the whole family in on this. And I see people here who don't have money but have bikes, and this is just asking for it, okay? So what we're talking about is we're talking about damaging the environment by putting in a mechanical machine, okay? CO2 emissions, rail maintenance facilities. You need professional rail crews, NSDB structures, everything else. In place of this, what I'm saying is take this, make this whole thing a bike trail, no environmental damage. You've got people going out there and they are running their heart rates up, they're cutting down their weight, they're cutting down their ACH levels and all those kind of things. And we then be joined, we had a thousand people showed up one day, one activity for the Black Fly Challenge. One thousand, one thousand people, okay? Healthy, working, going, okay? Please, make it. One full, on the ground, crush stone, bike trail, three percent for people that were born the same year as Dustin Hoffman.
Thank you, Clay. And Andy Trump. Okay, Mike Clay. And he'll be followed by Roseanne Warner.
Good evening. I remember about twenty years ago, a little over twenty years ago, they were proposing the whole Lake Placid, starting the training in between Lake Placid and Serenac Lake. And I was a hundred percent for it. I thought, oh, this is great. They've got a business plan. The business plan was, oh, we're going to make money, and we're going to use our money, and we're going to refurbish the tracks, and we're going to keep right on going to Tupper Lake. As we know, that never happened. It's been a giant money pit that has just wasted millions and millions of taxpayer dollars, and less than twenty years later, it's closed. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result? Well, this is insanity. They're planning on wasting thirty-four million dollars again. Now, aside from that, a lot of older folks, if you've got kids, now, if they're proposing bringing families up from Utica to Tupper Lake, if you've got young kids or grandkids that are even patient to take a trip like that for god knows how many hours if the train doesn't break down, let alone some of their prior propositions to stop anywhere a canoeist wants to get out and let them off that train to slow down, start up again, how many hours is it going to take to get to Tupper Lake? And if you're with young kids, how are those kids going to be at the end of an eight, nine-hour trip? You're left in the junction of Tupper Lake. Where are you going to go to from there? There's no hotels. You're going to walk or get a taxi cab? The only business that's going to profit in Tupper Lake is a taxi service because people are going to want to take their kids home and not via return trip from the train. So, if you've got kids, even if they're patient, this train is not going to work. It's just, if you have a boat, it's the same thing. You're just constantly wasting money. And where, as the gentleman who was born with Dustin Hoffman mentioned, there's certainly a better option that is much more healthy for people. Thank you.
Roseanne Warner, and she'll be followed by Leo Burms.
My name's Roseanne Warner. I'm the president of the New York State Snowmobile Association. I'm glad to be here tonight. Thank you to you guys for putting this on. Couple of things, NICE will be sending probably four, five, six-page response to the UMP. The one thing I would say is that at the beginning of the program, they talked about how this was a concession. For snowmobilers, we've been on the trail for twenty-three years since the nineteen ninety-six UMP. To us, it is. When I first heard about this, the UMP for the Lake Placid to Remsen trail was very happy because I had a camp in Remsen, and then I was a little disappointed when I found out it wasn't going to go all the way down to Remsen. New York State Snowmobile Association's position is we'd like to see the rails removed from Big Moose all the way to Lake Placid. We think that in the draft document on page forty-one, they talk about how the maintenance of the rails is fifteen hundred dollars per mile. In two thousand and eighteen, the DOT spent over one hundred thousand dollars on emergency repairs on a very small section of the rail tracks. The state's got a six billion dollar deficit. You know, we can't even pay for Medicaid. And we're talking about spending thirty-one million dollars, thirty-four, whatever it's going to be, I think that's grossly underestimated, to repair rails. Who's going to ride them? You know, I took my kids on the train years ago. It's a one-and-done thing, kind of, or for us it was. I will say though to the DEC, DOT, whoever's, you know, if this does happen and it goes all the way to Tupper Lake, which I see as a big waste, you know, the ties with the creosel. We had some washouts on the trail this year or on the rail. There was oil slicks on top of the water. So if you're going to do it, don't use creosel ties, please. You know, down in Long Island, they're using concrete ties. You know, if we're in the park and we're trying to be environmentally conscious, reusing ties from old sections, and I guarantee you, you're going to find there's not a lot you're going to be able to use. There's pictures out there on the internet that show just how bad they are. You know, I just, God bless to everybody that comes tonight and talks about this. This is twenty-three years in the making. One of the pages in there talks about snowmobilers that are trespassing. If there's trespassing going on off of the rails, please let NICE know. We'll do what we can. We'll work with the DOT, the DEC to get those areas fixed. But we've been good stewards of the land. We've tried to concede and play along. The last UMP, well, we conceded and we were going to allow it. But now that we're back to nineteen ninety-six again, we say from Big Moose all the way to Lake Placid. Please, thank you.
Leo Burms, and he'll be followed by Marcel Carrier.
Good evening. My name is Leo Burms. I do reside in Schneidler County, long ways away, but I do have a four-season camp up around Seabees Corner, St. Lawrence County, and I also have a second home in Franklin County. So, I spend a lot of time in North Country. Tonight, I am delivering a message not just for myself, but I also have five thousand four hundred and forty-three signatures for Exhibit Eight of people that would like to have these rails removed all the way to Big Moose. So, have I rode the rails on C-7? Yeah. I've rode the rails. That's a five hundred dollar check because the trails were good. Lots of snow covered. Not the chance. That was five miles an hour just crossing the tracks. Tracks have to go. Thank you to the DEC staff for coming out and hosting four meetings in public to voice their opinions of the best value to the public. My next line also said thank you for taking the time to put forth your advice in much more current going. After tonight's presentation, I disagree. The fact that they're going forward with the rails first versus the trail is insane. Back to the economics, you haven't proven economically that it's viable. My question of cost is listed out on page forty. I'd like to understand how converting to just a trail costs forty percent less than rehabilitating forty-five miles of rail, replacing ties, improving structures. The small maintenance facility, fifty by two hundred, that's small. At Tupper Lake, I also question the viability of a city train to Tupper Lake. The Adirondack railroad has not ventured past Fendera for the past two years. Why not? Will there all of a sudden be a great demand to ride six hours to Tupper Lake to find transportation to the Wile Center? To the center of town from Woodsman Day? Transportation from Fendera to town has been inconsistent for various reasons. Regardless, this has left numerous customers stuck in Fendera with nothing to do and no way to spend money in town. Economic viability. You can take it this is not fabricated, but write from ASR's Facebook page as well as from TripAdvisor. How can one expect transportation to be any better in Tupper Lake? What guarantees are there? This isn't about snowmobile or more trails. It's about economic viability. Why would you not want to allow people their own transportation on the trip? Bat bikes, bicycles, snowmobiles, hikers. You've got the Tremor Lake contract, right? This could be the contender for the North of Placid Trail. How far could you go and enjoy it? I close, asking you to, like, I'm going to laugh. Would it be easy to consider alternatives to seven A, whatever you want to make it? Remove the rails, create a trail for thirty-five mile stretch from Tupper Lake to Lake Placid first. Remove the forty-five miles of rail to prepare for conversion to a new rail and see what kind of revenue and traffic is generated while the rail works to be successful from Utica to Old Forge. If the rail can become successful from Utica to Old Forge and sustain itself in revenue, then consider spending thirty-one point six million to rehabilitate Tupper Lake. You will soon see the revenue generated by snowmobilers and summer travelers will be able to maintain most of the trail and prevent severe erosion with increased visibility on the trail. That's it.
Thank you. Marcel Carrier. He'll be followed by, excuse me, Sean Lockman.
Marcel Carrier, I'm a forty-nine-year snowmobiler and a nineteen-year rail trail bicyclist. DEC and DOT, I am requesting that you consider a longer multi-use rail trail from Lake Placid to Big Moose Station. The Adirondack Park State Land Master Plan says in part, "The Act requires the agency to classify the state lands in the park according to their characteristics and capacity to withstand use." The rail that would easily have the capacity to withstand multiple uses year-round, unlike the absence of use in the Tupper Lake to Big Moose Station railroad section of the travel corridor in the last twenty-three years. The key to the Adirondack Park's ability to become a successful year-round tourist attraction is winter. The townships of Inlet and Webb, luckily known as Old Forge, have mastered winter tourism. In the mid nineteen sixties, forward-thinking persons in those towns recognized a new method of wintertime recreation that would turn their towns into a flourishing wintertime destination. That recreation was snowmobiling. The opening of a multi-use rail trail from Big Moose to Lake Placid would effectively add another five hundred-plus miles of already existing snowmobile trails to the town of Webb and Inlet's rail system for free. With the addition of this extra trail mileage, Old Forge and the Adirondacks become the snowmobiling destination in the northeast. Especially for snowmobilers seeking longer rides, which now go to Maine and Canada to get these rides. With this shorter link to other snowmobile trails, it would also help the forgotten locations of Piercefield, Conifer, Childwood, Cranberry Lake, Star Lake, and other northern Adirondack towns to increase their winter visitors. Because of legal actions against community connector snowmobile trails, it is even more urgent that this important community connector snowmobile trail, which this rail that is, be allowed to operate all winter long without impediment by making it a multi-use trail. Access to a world-class bicycling rail trail at Big Moose Station would be a profitable addition to the Old Forge area. With development of the Grass River Railroad Trail, which would hopefully connect to a future Adirondack trail in Mount Heron, tourists will be able to access by bicycle and snowmobile the forgotten locations of Conifer and Cranberry Lake. The train component of the travel corridor should remain as it is now. The current operator seems to be consolidating its operations with some success. Transporting bicyclists from the Empire State Trail at Utica to Big Moose Station would allow bicyclists to ride the greater Adirondack trail and give the ASR additional customers. New York State DEC and DOT, let's make the Remsen-Lake Placid travel corridor withstand its capacity for maximum use by having a seventy-nine-mile rail trail from Big Moose Station to Lake Placid. Thank you.
Does this going to change anything? Does this going to change anything? I have no idea.
Good evening. My name is Sean Lockman, Westphalia, New York. My great-grandfather built up a camp for my family, worked sixty years ago with Fendera, and had the privilege of spending summers and winters here my entire life. As a man of a younger generation, I am in favor of a trail from Big Moose Station north. My perspective, many others my age, is that trains are out of date. We are an active generation. We are an active generation. Having a trail from Big Moose north would bring people from all over to see the area. I am a hiker, a liker, and a snowmobiler who understands what kind of economic benefit a trail like this could have. I consider Old Forge to be a gateway to the Adirondack Park where a mix of people come to start their adventures. Old Forge shows thousands of snowmobile trail passengers each year. Having a connection post by in Big Moose to a world-class trail would allow them and many others of different recreational activities safe and easy access to the north. The ASR has tried and failed as a rail operator, as the maintenance contractor there along the corridor to crumble north of Big Moose. It is time that we stop funding this operation and think about how a trail will bring life back to all the communities along the corridor. These are our tax dollars, and you should let us spend them the way we should. Rip them off.
He'll be followed by Steve Hope.
Yeah, I'm Jim McCully. I've been going at this a little while. And I heard someone talk about the state's commitment hasn't been here for the railroad. Well, if you look at the nineteen ninety-four unit management plan that I guess was finally adopted in ninety-six, there was a five-year test period to go on the railroad to see if it was a viable alternative. Along with that, there was a letter written by ARPS, Adirondack Railway Preservation Society, that stated they would pay for all rehab of the track. No state plums would be needed. Of course, there hasn't been an inch of track done without state plums. Of course, there hasn't been an inch of track done without state funds. You know, this is, this is just, what we're doing here is just throwing good money after bank. And we, we talk about the, the communities between Tupper Lake and Lake Placid and all of them having resolutions that they wanna have the trail in place. But we also have resolutions from the Town of Colt, from St. Lawrence County, from Conifer, or I guess that's Piercefield. We have a number of areas that have also passed resolutions that they wanna trade. And, you know, Marcel is right, these areas are in desperate need of economic development. I mean, it, there's, I talked about it in Tupper Lake, there's just a hundred thousand dollar grant for Tupper Lake so they could draw more tourists there in the winter. What better way is there to draw tourists to Tupper Lake in the wintertime than by snowmobile? Here we, here we sit in Old Forge, they're the number one sales tax producer for Herkimer County. Lake Placid's the number one sales tax producer for Essex County. What's in the middle? Tupper Lake, Cranberry Lake, all these little communities that would see no one if it wasn't for snowmobiling. And, you know, we can talk about, oh, you know, the snowmobiles go fast on the, on the rails and that's what's dangerous. Nah, Mike borrowed my wife's sled one time, we were going, we were going five miles an hour through Serenac Lake, he took the ski off of it. You know, and that, that's, that's the, the thing that really keeps people from using the rail. I believe it was in nineteen ninety-eight, they did a traffic study over three months, and ninety-eight was a very good snow year, but they had, they had a traffic count for snowmobiles of about three hundred dollars. You'll never see that many people ride that train in forty years. It's time to move on. Let's, let's turn the trail all the way to Big Moose. Thank you.
Steve Hopeful, I forgot your name, right? Okay. He'll be followed by Jeffrey Johnson.
Steve Alpham, Business Interger at Old Forge. This is the second round of these meetings I've been to, listening to different things, and I'm still just sort of confused because the rail corridor is sort of like a snake. And we're gonna cut the head of the snake off and stop in Tupper Lake, so you're pretty much killing the thing, which I don't see where there would be draw for people wanting to go to Tupper Lake. Most people, well, they've heard of Tupper Lake, Lake Placid, they have. And the other thing I'm really concerned about is with pulling up the rails, there are areas that are total wilderness, and the last round of meetings I went to, everybody said the same thing. You pull up the rails, it changes qualification, or you're gonna be allowed to go through that land. And perfect example was up in Shrews River Plains, DEC did all the jumps and hoops, opened up new trails, and as soon as the trails were open, groups brought lawsuits against the state. So my biggest concern is, if they pull the rails, are we gonna be guaranteed if we still have that trail? The ones the rail beds there and the rails are there, we can ride that trail. The problem is, there's no alternative trails. You've got that quarter going up through, there's no other routes you can go. So we have to really sit and look at that, because if we lose that quarter, we lose going all the way through Star Lake and Savas up and around. That's all I have on it.
Thank you. I, I do feel obligated, because a couple of people spoke about this already. The corridor is classified travel corridor, that's what it's classified as. So the adjacent land classifications do not have any impact on the corridor, because it's already classified. Jeff Johnson, and he'll be followed by Daxel Bruin.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Johnson. I'm a former president of the New York State Snowmobile Association. I'm also here as a representative of the Herkimer County Snowmobile Trail and Trade Association representative. We fully support and our eleven clubs in Herkimer County maintaining almost eight hundred miles of trails beyond Old Forge which connect into Old Forge and connect into this corridor, strongly approve and want, and have been waiting for forty-plus years for the removal of these rails from Big Moose Station to Lake Placid. We are thirty-five hundred-plus members in eleven clubs. This, we currently have now, as some other speakers have talked about, snowmobiling occurs is no longer a, a local sport, it's a regional long-distance sport. We have people coming from as far south, last year came through our club riders coming from below O'neana, New York, when the snow was there. They're coming through our area, up into Herkimer County, through Herkimer County, accessing that quarter and went all the way to Maloney, came back during their week travel. The state, you have to realize this, you've got to know about this. This is a corridor, it is the backbone, I repeat, the backbone of snowmobile trails in this Adirondack Park. The time to talk is over. I was here, I used to be the one that used to sign the contract for this quarter when we first started out. So I've been here long enough to realize what's going on. I've heard all the stories, lots of plans, long on, long on wind and short on delivery, okay? And I'm, and we're totally supportive of the towns and villages in the North Country. We've heard of, enough's enough. It's time to move on. It is long past time to move on. It's been fifty years past time to move on. Money's for the planet. I agree. Where's the money coming from? I'd also question, where's the money? Where's the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is going in for maintenance? And where's that going right now? I strongly urge it, something would be done, and my clubs are asking the question in Herkimer County, where's that three fifty going for maintenance of what? Longer, we need a area where safety is, is top and a longer season. And we urge this end and the trail from Big Moose Station to Lake Placid, the trails need to be removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Daxel Bruin.
Hi, my name's Dan Bruin. I'm a member of the New York State Trails Council, I'm also a member of the New York State Horse, Horse Association, Horse Council. I'm on the board of the Horse Council, and I'm also the judgmentary chair of the Horse Council. You've talked about this being a multi-use trail. You left out a major user group of questions. We ride trails, you don't have to change the trail from a stone-dust trail to anything else, we're happy to ride that, that's great. We'd love to ride the Adirondacks on a nice trail, visit the various communities the trail goes through, we spend a few hours a day on our horses, the rest of the time, we're doing something else. That means we're probably spending money in your communities, in the communities you want to have tourists come in. We are tourists, and we will spend money in these communities. Please, let us have the trails, make them truly multi-use, not just pedestrians and people on bicycles. Let the recreational music, okay? The question, the recreational question mentioned in New York State is about three billion dollars every year. We spend a lot of money on our horses every year. Unlike a snowmobile, we can't park our horse for ten months in a year, or eight months in a year. We have to spend money on it every day, we have to spend time with them every day, and we do. We spend a lot of money on time with them, and we will spend it with our horses wherever we go, okay? So let us come up here and let us ride. We'd love to visit. Thank you.
Dan was our last speaker tonight. I wanna thank you all for coming out, especially wanted to give my appreciation, both of you stood up and spoke. As I said, December, excuse me, January eighth is the last day for comments, please get written comments in. Two other things, one, if you had written notes, please drop them off with us and we'll get them into the official record. That way we make sure we capture all of your votes, not just the high points that we captured on the boat, or the easels here. And also, if you came in and didn't sign in, we ask before you leave that you sign in at the desk so we get a full count of everybody that was here. Otherwise, thank you and have a safe ride home.
Do you have any questions at all?
No, if you have questions, we'll take them individually if you wanna come up.
Do you have any Big Moose at all?
Well, glad to talk to you, sir.
I was, I was, I was talking about Tupper Lake, I'm with our Big Moose. I think if it by far.
If you have a comment, sir, you're welcome to make it.
Why not do it open forum?
Excuse me?
Why not do it in open forum where everybody can understand?
Because we didn't do it around any other location, and this is, we're gonna make sure we're doing it the same at every location, so everybody has the same opportunities. But we're glad, any one of us are glad to stay and talk to you about it.
I just think everybody should hear what's going on, instead of something in private.
That, that's not the way we set up the meeting, I'm sorry.
I get that.
Thank you.